Good evening, welcome to the January twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen Board of Selectments meeting, time being six oh one P M with the record reflect the members present. Is anyone recording the meeting? Anybody else? Okay. First item on the agenda, discuss and act in agreement with Churchill and Banks regarding potential for medical marijuana dispensary and riverfront business park properties.
Here we are, Ray Lady and Vince were here.
Just your name for the record.
Ray Lady, Vin Jordan.
And Churchill and Banks and Compassion Care.
Sorry.
That's fine. So we sent the proposed agreements to council. Did we get those back from Council David?
No, we did, and he recommended the agreement that's in the packet, which specifies Churchill and Banks that they gotta keep their thousand feet provision that was agreed to by the parties at the initial meeting.
So it looks like we have two host community agreements, one with Churchill and Banks and one with Liberty Compassion.
Yes.
And both cite the same thousand dollar, uh, thousand, thousand foot restriction.
Yes.
Okay. Your attorneys have had a chance to review this and...
Came to us, and I sent it back to Ally, she sent it to Mark Rich, and we accepted all his changes and sent it back.
So everything's good with them? Okay. So that being said, I'll entertain a motion to, well, first, any discussion? We want to discuss it. It's pretty much the same we've discussed last time, except for the revisions. Here in all the comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we forward the agreement, sign the agreement.
Uh, second.
Motion made in second, any discussion on the motion? These are, that motion's for both Liberty and for...
Yes.
Any further discussion on the motion? Here and none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Opposed, yeah. Give me time, I was getting there.
I know, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Motion carries. So, that'll do, we'll sign it.
You're gonna do it now, or do we wait you until later?
Um, does this has to get posted? I don't know if there's a post period on this.
Not that I'm aware of.
We can sign, but it has to be dated to...
The letter of support.
None of the position.
So it's two separate companies, but is it like one facility with Liberty and Churchill?
Well, Liberty Compassion is, it's an umbrella company, but it's, it's only one facility.
Okay.
I haven't heard that.
I'd tell you, he tested me.
Yeah, we said here.
Cannot do that.
Yep.
This is different, this isn't that.
No, that's the letter of the other project.
Yeah, no, that's, we're just doing this for now. Okay. So it's getting passed down, as soon as it's done, I'm sure you can take it. We'll have to have signed copies also.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, 'cause all that's gonna be...
That's what I mean.
Okay.
So we'll, you can pick up the signed copy, we'll have our signed copies, we'll take copies.
The date's not in there.
The date's not on it. You will have, you have to sign it, and then we'll exchange copies, that's usually how it works.
Unless you wanna sign...
It's actually Richard Bakari's name on it anyhow, so...
I have, I have three copies of that agreement signed right now, just a new one, not, not the both of them. I think he already did the other one, didn't he? The host community agreement.
This one's just for, this one's Liberty Compassion, no, these are both Churchill and Banks. So we sign the copy, he needs to sign a copy, and we keep it.
Is that the same one as that one?
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
All right.
I don't know if it's a host community agreement as much as a side agreement.
Yeah.
To the original host community agreement.
There's three of them.
That'll save us time, and that way we'll...
I know, that's why I brought them.
We'll sign these, and then that way, once we sign those, we'll give everything to you, and you should be all set.
Correct, correct, that's why I brought them.
Perfect.
Dates wrong.
The only, again, we'll still have to put in the date.
Dates wrong, I read.
Right.
It's an eight, it says eighteen on here, so I just wanted to make sure it's got the other stuff. It does, it just, they carry the eighteen, so...
No, I, I'm gonna, can I suggest that we hang on to these? We sign them, hang on to them?
Yeah, you can.
Right, and then, and then we'll clean them up with the dates, the correct dates and everything, and then we'll have the town administrator and Tim forward everything over to you, and then that way, we don't have to go looking for another signature, it's already there.
Right.
Okay.
Can I mail these, or should I come and get them?
Whatever's easiest for you, as soon as...
I, well, when will they be done?
Tomorrow? I mean, it's only a date, right? Yeah, tomorrow.
So, I'll call, I'll call Ally.
Mm-hmm.
And find out if she's got them in her possession, and when I hold them in her possession, I'll come get them. Is that okay?
Yep.
Want a file folder?
Yes.
You don't want it for that, though, do you? Okay, maybe you owe us a few.
You're all set, thank you very much.
Excuse us.
No, you have to stay for the rest of the meeting? That's your penance.
Yeah, I know, that's your penance.
I got it.
When are you slated to be open?
Four left.
Oh, like, ten days? No, I don't know. You don't know, that's fine. It's, it's gonna be a while, it's gonna be a lot.
It's gonna go to the end of his commission and go through that whole process.
You gotta get a license and all that, it's gonna, it'll be some time. This is just another step.
Approved road opening permit for seven Campanella Drive, as submitted by Ever Sauce. Has everybody had a chance to take a look at it, what they're looking to do?
I'm fine.
It's just an extension.
Uh, make, go ahead.
Make a motion.
Make a motion to endorse.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion on the motion? Here and none, all in favor?
Aye.
Approved two thousand and eighteen, nineteen snowplow contract for Dean Petty, Bryant Hill Farms.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
We have everything from him, everything's in, then, motion made in second, and any discussion on the motion? Here and none, all in favor?
Aye.
Act in agreement, Briggs Engineering and Testing Construction Testing for Police Station Project.
Um, the O P M has forwarded to us information regarding, basically, testing for certain materials such as soils, concrete, precast, post-tensioning structural steel, fireproof in Mason area of the Tumis concrete. The estimated cost of the testing would be thirteen thousand ninety dollars. I would recommend that the board do this, this is relative to the police station during the construction phase. The, the O P M and the architect specify that you need to test certain materials to make sure that they are the same types of materials that were specified in the contract that was signed by both the parties. This company provides that testing services to verify that the materials that are being used are correct in the, to the specification.
It's a third-party construction testing. It was already in the scope of work since we had set aside under twenty thousand dollars for it. They hit the mark, and Briggs is the one that Taylor McDonald and Palmeroy has recommended to this board. This board will also, will have to endorse the contract, but we'll also have to take it to the police station subcommittee for their endorsement as well.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
So this basically is just an oversight account?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a third-party construction testing, and what they do is they look over, they test the soils, the concrete, they review the framing, the steel, all of that stuff, so that's all that is.
Motion made in second, any discussion on the motion? Here and none, all in favor?
Aye.
Act on renewal for the P E G agreement, access inter municipal agreement between towns of Middleborough and Freetown. This is the Lake Cam, M Cam agreement, it's up again, and I guess we'd sign one-year deals, two one-year deals, or three one-year deals, how does that work?
'Cause we weren't sure what we were doing.
Uh, this is the M Cam deal, last year we signed a one-year deal. They suggest, they were, expressed interest in doing three years at the same terms as the one-year for this year, and the next two left.
I had the town administrator provide last year's negotiation tables and rates. The reason I did that is, when you shake out the numbers, they're pretty close, whether we went with just Lake Cam, or if we went with the mid, Middleborough and Lake Cam, the M Cam and Lake Cam. I don't know how you feel, the quality of the product has been so far, whether you wanna stay with the same direction we've been going in, if we wanted to make a change, now would be the time. Any discussion?
I've been happy with the way everything's been shaken out so far, have you had any?
The only issues I have is the quality of video when it goes to the, the TV broadcast isn't the best quality. The sound is much better, as you can see, where even, we even have desktop mic now to pick us, pick us up, but the quality's terrible. The placement has gotten a little better, there's been some advertising rolling through on the screen, but it's, unless you know when it is, it's hard to find it.
Yeah.
And that's something we've had an issue with in the past, but...
I've lived through it once, twice, I don't mind having to go through that again.
Three times?
Yes.
Once, twice?
Something about watching the video on TV.
I try not to watch it, because the camera adds like forty or fifty pounds, and then you lose like twenty percent of your hair, from what I've heard.
Um, I, I think that, I, I feel okay with it. The thing is, is that if, if you feel that way, I think maybe we should send a letter saying, you know, that we're in agreement with this, but we also would like to know what your future plans are for...
And I don't know if it's a quality thing, where we tape in a higher, if we, what, come on, on camera for a second.
[laughing]
Since you're here as, not a representative, but you have a little bit of knowledge in Boy, you're turning red. What, what currently are we filming in? Is it, do we film in high def, are we filming in...
Yes, we do.
We just bought a new camera.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I don't know all the particulars, but in the translation, it's not on our end, it's on the, the end.
Is it because we're filming in a higher grade, and then when they degrade it down to the lower signal, is that's where we're losing a lot of the...
Yeah, 'cause this, 'cause we're doing it in high def.
We're doing it in high def. On YouTube, it looks so much better than TV quality broadcast.
Yeah, it's the, it's the broadcast, I don't know the particulars, but...
Comcast or...
I think it would be with Comcast, yeah.
Yeah, it would be, I would think it would be Comcast.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can put yourself on the film credit for that.
You want me to...
I M B D.
Yeah, I think you should reach out to whomever is in charge of Comcast, and I know that at one point we had talked about trying to take some of this money that we get from...
The cable fees.
The cable fees, and using it towards trying to negotiate a better deal with Comcast.
It's actually, the contract is coming up in two thousand and twenty. I initiated discussions between Comcast, I've spoken to, I think it's Mike Gallo. I have also spoken to Bill Hewig at Keltman and Page, because they need to be involved in the discussions, and over the next, it's, it's gonna take, you know, six to twelve months to negotiate a contract with them. I think that the first step would be to sit down with the committee and decide, you know, specifically what it is that we should be looking for in the next contract, as well as, one of the things we have to do is a community needs assessment, which would be sort of a, it can be a survey monkey kind of survey that can be sent out to everybody in town, saying, you know, how can we make the service better, what would you like to see for programming, that kind of thing, and that'll give us a baseline in terms of helping with the process of negotiating. That's generally a requirement, it's part of the contract negotiation. I have started working on that.
All right, so if the contract is up in two thousand and twenty, and it takes a year, six, a year, then I think that we should, it would be, it would behoove us to stop moving on that and bring the...
We don't wanna be behooved.
Nope, we don't wanna be behooved, so I think that that would be one of the things that we should stop working on.
All right, so we'll put this off to, continue this to the next meeting, so we can get some answers from them, okay? Any other concerns or comments about it?
Oh, no, I, I, I'm okay with the way it is.
I compare it to, if you look at Lake Cam's, if you go on Lake Cam's, it's clear, it's, it's got great signal, it's great quality, the vid, the audio quality's great, and you look at ours, and it's, it's...
Does, what does, um, Lake Cam have, Horizon or Comcast?
Comcast.
Okay. Then we'll have to find out those answers.
Okay. Discuss set meetings for Economic Development Committee.
Well, I'm sorry, that's me.
Somebody needs oil now.
You laugh.
No, I'm not laughing.
I've been out straight all week.
I already had that breakdown call the other day.
Discuss meeting with, discuss, set a meeting for Economic Development Committee.
I think we should do it sooner rather than later.
I can come.
Because we already have something that we can start working on.
Yep.
That agreement is one of the things that we should really take a good look at, and see if that's the direction that we wanna go into. I know that somebody had thrown out maybe a lien, blah, 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 but those are all things that we need to talk about at that committee, and really, it's an opportunity for people to be involved, to say, this is what I wanna see down, this is what I wanna see for the town, and this is what I don't want to come into the town, and, and I think that the Economic Development Committee is one of those places to first start at.
I agree.
Perfect, so what are we looking at?
Charlie, any concerns, questions, anything you...
No.
Okay.
I won't be here for a month.
What?
Won't be here for a month.
Which month?
Just February.
Oh.
It's a short one.
Okay, we're good, me neither, so, how about, um, the first week in March?
Since I'll be mayor in the month of February.
Mm-hmm. First month, the first month in March, the first month in March, first week in March?
First week in March would be the fourth through the eighth.
Or, or do you wanna do it sooner, like the first week in February?
Why don't we do one mid-February, and then we can go s... Well, we're good, um...
I can do the third week in February, like...
Actually, the last week in February, year through the...
Eighteenth.
Tenth through the eighteenth.
Mm.
No.
Sixth.
Let's cut you on here till the tw, oh, that's different, that's Ally.
Six through the eighteen.
Okay. Yeah, third week.
So the third week?
Um, we have a selectmen's meeting on the Tuesday, because Monday's a holiday, no, and then we have police subcommittee meeting on the twenty-first, on the Thursday.
That's not me.
Police Station Committee, oh, it's nine A M.
Yeah, that's a, um...
All right. Um, and then anti-harassment at ten thirty A M. How about the week after, the twenty...
Are you back then, or are you still gone?
He's gone until the third.
Third or fourth of March, whichever, the first one, I guess.
Do you mind if we have the first one without you?
Don't. Keep moving.
So how about like the twenty-seventh, Wednesday, the twenty-seventh of February?
Okay.
Okay.
You wanna do, set up one more in March, so we have a second one?
Sure.
We'll stick with the Wednesdays?
Mm-hmm.
Um, how about the twentieth of, um, it's almost a month, how about the twentieth of March, on a Wednesday?
Okay.
Are those at night, or are they during the day?
Oh, I think it would, it would be hard to meet during the day.
Sorry, let's say like six o'clock?
Yeah.
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 Here at six?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Excellent. Discuss act on, act on memorandum of agreement and action plan for mass development regarding former Freetown screw.
Okay, I've been contacted by Mass Development regarding our plans for use on the Freetown screw property, and they have asked that I put together an action plan to address how we're gonna transmit the land from the town to a party to develop affordable housing, senior affordable housing, as well as small, a small commercial development that's part of that project. So what I did is I put together a letter that's gonna be on the agenda, hopefully February fourteenth, basically outlining the history of the project. There is one mistake on that lot sixty-four, it's the wrong number on page two. The change in administrators, why the project has taken as long as it has, as well as the actual ac, action plan, which calls for us to get legislative action done to acquire the land for the Freetown Housing, uh, yeah, I keep drawing a blank on the name, Freetown Housing Authority, and then seeking public and business input as to how to develop the R F P, working with Mass Development to develop the R F P, develop a selection, develop a selection plan, which would include, you know, how many housing units are gonna be built, as well as the number of units and the type of construction that's gonna be on site. One R F P condition, particularly on the Cushinget parcel, is that we're unsure as to what still needs to be mitigated over there in terms of remedial action. The developer would assume that liability, and in the case that we can't get a developer to assume that liability, that we would then go out and get some money, hopefully from Mass Development, to take a look at it, and then re-advertise the project again, to see if we can get a developer who would be interested in building the project.
So, this has kinda fallen through the cracks when the, when Jack left, but he was the point person on that. They had given us some money to research it and go through the process. There was some timeline production quotas in there. We bumped up against one because it wasn't a priority on our end, and to be fair, David, he didn't really know about it until...
About a month ago.
He got notified from them, and then I said, oh, yeah, I, I, it's, when Jack was getting off, as I was getting on, so there was that little layover period, so I don't know, I know a little bit about it, but I wasn't there for most of that, that was mostly through Paul's administration. So, we took a little, we had to do a little digging. David mostly did it, and got to the bottom of where we stand, what the process is, and what we have to do to satisfy them, so they don't go forward in collection, because if we didn't have an action plan by a certain date, they wanna, one of the stipulations is, is Mass Development could get their money back. So, that's where we stand, that's why this is coming back to the forefront now.
So what do you need from the board?
Just, just an approval to submit the plan. I did submit the plan to Brian Noble, who was the Cushinget Town Administrator, he has it on his agenda also for this evening, so that both towns are involved in the process, and both towns will be petition, the legislator, the legislative branch to, to transfer the property to the Freetown Housing Authority. We, we need both parties to be involved in order to accomplish that, and once that's done, then we actually begin the process of putting together an R F P, and seeking public and private input into the types of development that would go there and how...
Right, so do you just need an approval for this action plan?
For this action plan, yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the Freetown screw action plan.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second, any other discussion on the motion? Here and none, all in favor?
Aye.
Act on two thousand and nineteen, class two renewal of chipaway auto sales and bleach, beach bluff auto sales. We are in possession of all there.
Yep, everything's in order, and we just have...
Clean on M L C.
Yep, clean, no, no complaints, none of them.
And no complaints.
Yep.
Right, make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made in second, and any discussion on the motion? Here and none, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Act on ambulance abatement write-offs for the month of December two thousand and eighteen, it's a small month this month. And just so the board knows too, we set up a meeting with the fire chief, myself, and the representative from Comstar, Comstar, to see if we can abate some of these abatements, 'cause this is a small month, it's only twelve, eleven thousand eight hundred seventy-seven dollars, forty-six months of write-offs this month, but normally it's in the twenty to thirty thousand dollar range, so, when you do the math, it almost pays for the rest of its budget. Anyways.
I'll make a motion for the sums of sixty-seven thousand six hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-five cents for contractual allowances, and eleven thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and forty-six cents for write-offs for the month of December, for a total of seventy-nine thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars and forty-one cents.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion on the motion? Here and none, all in favor?
Aye.
Approved Board of Selectmen's minutes for the meeting, January seventh, two thousand and nineteen, did we have a chance to review those minutes?
Yep.
Any concerns or questions?
Uh-uh.
I'll entertain a motion for the approval.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as read.
Second.
Motion made in second, any further discussion on the motion? Here and none, all in favor?
Aye.
Police Station Project update.
So, we had our kickoff meeting on twelve twenty, it was a relatively short meeting, we reviewed the personnel, what their responsibilities were, we reviewed the accounting practices to assure timely and proper payments. We're gonna use, right now, behind the highway bond for heavy equipment and to detour traffic. We're concerned about the buses and the police memorial drive, so we're gonna be using Chase Road, but we're gonna use the back of the highway department for heavy equipment and so, so forth. The trailer should be going in soon, the trailer will just be used for construction meetings, and will be the go-to place for any onsite things that are happening. We secured the contract tonight for the third-party construct, construction testing. The permit has been submitted, and we're ready for a site plan review. I know David went to a meeting with Jeff and with C G A to review the site plan, to review the plans, and, right, and that's all in play right now. Well, we're gonna have another meeting on Thursday, but our meeting is kicked back to January thirty-first, there at nine o'clock in the morning, and that's basically where we're at right now. I don't have, you have anything else?
Uh, the only thing I would mention is that we're gonna issue the notice to proceed tomorrow. I got the information from Taylor today on the dates, so that we're ready to issue that tomorrow.
Have you been in contact with Kevin, to see planning board schedule and that stuff?
I did, when I sat down with Jeff, I wanted to make sure that Kevin was there. There is a willingness on the part of the planning board to hold a special hearing, if necessary, to help, you know, move the project along and keep it on its, its track.
That's it?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Town administrator's report.
I did attend a meeting in Middleborough last week on the Esso opposite Pond complex, I know I didn't say that right.
Close enough.
I have, I, for some reason, I have trouble with that. On, in Long Pond, the meeting was a joint meeting between the Board of Selectmen in Lakeville and in Middleborough. They called it primarily because of the hurrying run, which is proposed for the fall, and what they were gonna do with that, but there's also a great deal of concern by residents along Long Pond as to the height of the water, as it currently is now, and right now, it's I guess at fifty-four point five inches, the, a feet, I should say. The limit is fifty-seven feet, so there's a potential for flooding in the spring. They're gonna hold a meeting to, it was supposed to be tomorrow, it's January thirtieth at three o'clock, with all the local emergency planning groups, and they've also invited the Boards of Selectmen to attend that, just basically to start planning on how we're going to address any potential flooding that could happen in the spring, and how to mobilize the, the necessary equipment and personnel needed to offset that. I know that the Pond complex has been a long discussion about that, in terms of reducing the level of weeds, the need for dredging and, and the millifoil that currently exists in the complex, and I've talked to the representative, Fiola, and I'm gonna be talking to the representative Schmidt and Senator Roderick's, about potentially funding some kind of, like a line in the budget, state budget to help us with this. I know there's discussion among the other parties to do the same, so hopefully that'll come out, it'll be unified front, in terms of our legislative delegation being aware of this problem and helping us to address it.
So this has been an ongoing problem for about ten years now, and the thing is, is that we're, we're hooked into this Pond complex where Middleborough is concerned with their hurrying run, but yet, Lakeville and Freetown are concerned with flooding, and it's always this give and take, and way back when, New Bedford was involved from...
Quiddus.
Right, and Taunton, Middleborough, Free Town, Lakeville. And we had our meetings held at DEP, because there was a concern, and it, it was foreseen that this was gonna happen, and nothing was ever done. And I gave David all the history that I had in my head, and I know that there are files somewhere that he can look at, but, you know, all those meetings were held at DEP, and it was a big, a big concern, and there's no way that anybody's gonna take care of the invasive weeds, and everything that needs to be done with that pond on a taxpayer's dime, it really has to be taken over by the state. Not taken over, but it needs to be addressed by the state, because that's the only way we're gonna do anything. There's all these little tributaries that are, that are full with weeds, and not only weeds, but like, that, that need to be dredged, that need to be, you know, opened up, so, so the natural flow of the pond can take care of what it needs to take care of. Right now, the pond is stagnant, and the only thing that's, it's doing is rising. And I'm concerned, not only what's gonna happen in the spring, but I'm concerned right now, because we're at fifty-four, and this weekend, we're supposed to, or Thursday, we're supposed to have a lot more rain. And if we don't have snow, and we continue down the path of just having rain, it's not gonna be that far along before we hit the fifty-seven. If anybody wants to take a look at the measuring stick, it's at...
Uh, it's at the, the camp, Paul Stadic, I guess has control over that, or knows where it is.
He knows where it is, yeah. So, yeah, having our, having our voices at the table is huge, because we cannot be, we cannot have our residents who live along pond, live along the pond, be held up because of, there needs to be a balance between the hurrying run and the residents along, along pond.
Right, basically it comes down to drainage.
Mm-hmm.
One drains into the next, so...
Yeah, it, it goes like this.
Right. So, that, Long Pond drains into Assawampset, which drains into the river, which is the hurrying run spawning area. So if you dump too much water, it washes the hurrying run through, and so they wanna retain some of the water back, which causes our pond levels to rise. Originally, we weren't necessarily invited to that meeting, we kinda...
I found out about the meeting.
Crashed the meeting, invited ourselves, because we, you know, our residents are affected by half that pond also, so...
I found out the morning of, and, and I did get up and make mention of the fact that, you know, we wanna partner with the other communities to help solve the problem, and the fact that we have received probably four calls over the last couple of weeks, concerned about the water levels and what was gonna be done.
And we all remember two thousand ten, the flooding in that area, the water was over, the boat ramp was running across the street, so we actually had sections closed where the National Guard was, Vice Lips Marine was monitoring traffic.
People lost their houses and had to rebuild, so I'd really wanna see that again. Thank you.
Anything else on your town ministry?
Uh, I got information from Ashley Lopes, the school building, school department business manager, that the boiler has been completed, and that I just wanted to give a shout-out to her, saying thank you for all the work she did to help us along with that. The LED lighting, I've been working with MAPC to basically try to develop an LED lighting plan for all the eighty-one lights that we have in town, and I just wanted the board to know that I am going to be having a streetlight audit done. The estimated cost of that is eight hundred and fifty dollars to fifteen hundred dollars, and what that would do is basically, we, it's done through MAPC, a consultant, and they go out and they took a look, look at every single light, they determine the luminosity of it, the, the type of light it is, whether there are obstacles around the light, such as screw branches, and they make a recommendation in terms of what would be recommended for an LED light to replace it. I guess there's a, in terms of the LED light itself, there's different coloring in the light, and we have to be really careful about that, and I'm hoping MAPC is gonna help us along with that for us, to select the best kind of light for the best type of environment that it's gonna be going in. So, I just wanted to give the board a heads-up on that. I have a department head meeting scheduled for one-thirty nineteen. On the agenda is the consolidated facilities budget. I'm gonna be sitting down and meet with all the department heads, go first week in February, to go over their budgets. We're gonna address the fraud policy, which the board had approved probably like three or four months ago, as a policy requires, we're gonna develop a form and basically have all the department's inventory, certain things, and, and within a certain threshold of, at least five thousand dollars, so that we have an accurate inventory of all of our assets. And finally, I just have it on here about the notice to proceed, that we're issuing a notice to proceed on the police station building, so that's it.
Thank you. Discuss combined facilities budget, as you just mentioned. We all have a copy of that in front of us, in yellow.
I worked with Kim to put together, basically, a spreadsheet that will identify specifically, so we, the individual departments don't lose control of, you know, or the board underseens what each of the individuals have for a budget, and how it, they incur expense against it. So, while it's gonna be under our control, the Board of Selectmen, what it will do is it'll segregate it into an aggregate, so we can basically track what's happening in, each of those individual budgets for certain types of utilities and services, as well as building maintenance. It's just a way to consolidate everything that is categorically in the same group, under one budget in one place, rather than means broken out in individual lines, in individual budgets.
Questions?
If we're gonna, if we wanna know how much each...
The top header is all the departments.
Right, so we're gonna be able to see that and know that answer?
Yes.
Okay.
So, and now when they submit...
That's the intent of that.
When they submit their budgets, they're gonna submit what they normally submit for their electrical budget, say, for example?
Yeah.
And then we'll, we'll put it in our aggregate electric budget?
Yep.
Is that how it would...
Oh, I, I wouldn't, alright. That's not how I was seeing it. I was seeing, as every department was gonna reduce their budget by this amount, and there would be a certain, a certain line item that would say electricity, and then have that aggregate amount...
But they would still wanna submit that to us, so we know which, what's coming out of that budget, so you know, okay, electrical, for example, police station's taking out sixteen thousand on electrical out of their budget, and so it's gonna go in the other, it's the same, we're saying the same thing.
Right.
Be going into this budget, under the police.
Right. It's gonna come out of their budget into this budget, but they're gonna have to show you what that is.
Right, so I, I would wanna see police, sorry, with a...
That was just an example, it wasn't picking your department.
Right, no, 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 so, right, so I wanna see police department with a reduced budget of twenty-seven thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars.
Yes, it'll, it'll come back to a reduction in their original budget.
It, the nice thing it's gonna allow you to do, the Board of Selectmen, is if the police budget is running over for some reason, electrical, and the highway department's running under, because it's approved at town meeting as electrical, not specific, you know, you don't have to do emergency fund transfers, because his department happens to be over, even though the money's there in another department, you don't have to move money around like that.
It's in an aggregate.
So I think that when you get all the budgets, you would go through them, and you would look at how much you're gonna reduce their budget by, before giving us the final number.
Yes, we're working on, that's contemplated.
Well, that's why, that's why I was trying to say, the department head, when he submits this, when they submit their budget, should submit that number and say, this is what we have taken out for electric and all these budgets, and you have to put into your aggregate budgets. Charlie, questions?
I got it.
Makes sense, okay. Board of Health?
Nothing.
Personal vote?
Only, only that, I, there is nothing really on the agenda, but just really, these cool temperatures are ridiculous right now, and you never know who's on the side of you, so if you have an elderly friend or neighbor, please just check in on them, and please make sure that all your pets are brought inside. We don't wanna see pets outside during these temperatures, but really, just check on one another, and, you know, do what we need to do. And if temperatures get to a certain point where we need to open up a warming station, we will do that, and we will consider that. But right now, just please check on one another. That's it.
We usually do warming stations when it gets to a certain temperature.
Yep.
That's it, that's it.
Okay, personal vote, board?
All right, first item is the appointment of Aaron Ken- Kenna as the senior clerk for the Council on Aging. We have a letter requesting that she be appointed, and also, a change of status slip for senior clerk for COA, starting at step, step one, sixteen, sixty-three, per hour for sixteen hours.
All right, do you, I, I know the letter says, should we vote on both of them in case Aaron says no, and Lori wants to? Then that way, we won't have to wait on it? So, all right, I'll make a motion to approve Aaron Kinnane and alternate choice Lori Cook for the Council on Aging, senior clerk position.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Should we make a motion to sign the certificate of appointment and the change of status forms for Aaron Kinnane, Kinnan, Kinnane, whatever?
Kinnane.
Kinnane. Provisionally that, as long as she accepts the position, 'cause we have him in front of us, it's on the agenda, so we can do that.
Yeah.
I'll make that a motion.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is a change of status for Robert Cavaca for resigning as the assistant transfer station attendant.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
I believe we said to send him a letter thanking him for his service at the last meeting, correct? Okay, thank you.
Next is a certificate of appointment for Chelsea Hester, for the appointment as senior librarian, effective June thirtieth, twenty nineteen, the end of the eighteen.
I'll make a motion to appoint Chelsea Hester as senior librarian, effective January seventeen, seventeenth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The next one, you don't mind, I'm gonna skip over.
Two of them, eighteen and nineteen?
Yep, just, well, as a, as a, to, just a note.
Yep, the two of them, okay.
Thirteen and nineteen.
So, we're going with twenty.
And Nicholas Drinkwine, change of status from step one patrol officer to step two patrol officer, twenty, twenty-nine seventy-one.
Uh, twenty-nine fourteen, uh, tw- twenty-nine forty-one?
Twenty-nine forty-one.
Yep, I'll make that a motion.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is to re, reaffirm the vote to accept officer John Pena the third on resignation from the police department.
I'll make a motion to reaffirm the vote taken on January seventh, regarding the letter of resignation from John Pena the third.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the same with the change of status form to resign.
I'll make a motion to endorse the change of status form for John Pena the third, effective January, uh, January twentieth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
A motion made, and seconded. Any further discussion?
That was regretfully.
Right.
Why I jumped over, oh, Nathan, the Mellow for, is that...
Point about it, point about it, Charlie, you gotta call the vote one.
Oh, I didn't call a vote.
No, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, Charlie, I just didn't wanna have to reaffirm again next one, next meeting.
Um, is, last week, we had a situation in town where a person, it was a call of a domestic disturbance, ended up with a person being armed, being in the household with a elderly family member also, and Sergeant, Sergeant Elton Ashley, Patrolman Patrick Lee, and Patrol Officer Nate Mellow responded, and it was, actually, it was a situation where they could have used deadly force, and they chose to confront a man who was holding a knife by tasering him, and they were, gladly, we can say they were successful, and they took him into custody. So I just, I've spoken to the chief already, and in the future, about a month or so, we're going to have an award ceremony for these officers, and several others, and potentially maybe some firefighters. I'd also mention it to the chief, but they, they put themselves, they, they could have used a firearm, and they didn't, and they put them, they all put themselves in danger. I think we need to realize that, and the fact that Nathan's being, uh, being appointed a re, a full-time reserve tonight, and hopefully he'll be filling the vacancy that opened, I just wanted to make that note, so...
Sounds like a good idea.
And I just bled some glue there. All right, so, I would make a, I'll accept the motion to, uh, accept the appointment.
I'll happily make the motion to appoint Nathan Mellow, temporary forty-hour-per-week reserve officer, as submitted by Chief, effective January twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, and make motion to sign change of status form for Nathan Mellow, reserve officer, temporary forty-hour week, as submitted by Chief Carlton Abbott, at the, sorry, I'm on a water because we skipped. Yes, please.
Twenty-seven seventeen.
Twenty-seven seventeen, thank you.
Second.
Uh, motion made, and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. New business, dates of upcoming Board of Selectmen's meeting, Monday, February fourth, Tuesday, February nineteenth, Monday, March fourth, Monday, March eighteenth.
I had a, an email, so this'll go onto new business. I had an email sent, wanting to know when we would have the next town building committee meeting, so...
Full, full committee?
Mm-hmm.
When the chair calls it?
Yeah. I'm gonna do some heavy-duty thinking about this right now. Anyway, so we might have to look for some time, but let's do it when you get back, all right? So, 'cause February is like gonna be too squishy for stuff to do.
So you're gonna put your budgets together pretty soon, so if there's anything that comes up that you need money for, you're gonna have to put your budgets together for town meeting, so...
Right.
All right, that being all the business duly in front of the board, we can enter executive session. Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Free Town Police Union, because an open meeting law, open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and this chair so declares. Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Town Hall Union, because an open meeting law may have detrimental effect of the bargaining position and the public bar, of the public body, and the chair does so declare. Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Highway Union, because the open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public body, and this chair does so declare. Excel Recycling LLC versus Town of Free Town. I'll detain a motion to enter into executive session.
Make that a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made, and seconded. Any discussion on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Ms. Pacico?
Yes.
Mr. Joe's, yes, we are in executive session.